Good morning, I'm calling this meeting for Lebanon County Commissioners to order. Would you, we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you, will all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll open more to any public comments this morning. Hearing none, seeing none. Okay, we'll move on. First item is to approve the minutes from meeting on March 20th. Have those in your package?
Mm-hmm.
Second. Motion second, and questions or comments on those minutes? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, those minutes are approved. And I will note for the record that this board met in executive session on March 26th to discuss personnel matters. And we've also had a late request to add an item to the agenda. I can't quite read the font on this note, it's a little small. I want to add Dan Lyons from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. So we'll accept a motion to add that agenda item.
Make a motion to approve Dan Lyons to talk about the community development block grant.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll expect him around 10 o'clock. So, Mrs. Newman.
Good morning. Okay, we had receipts on April 1st and April 2nd of $178,714.82. We had a total cash of $4,658,709.75. Our expenditures were $1,419,473.48. Our tax claim is $140,350.91. So that leaves us with $398,885.36.
I'll move to approve the report as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 And pose same sign, okay.
Okay, I do have some payments that need to be approved for April 15th. The 2016 G O B. The bond would be for $175,958.80.
Make a motion to approve the general obligation bond of 2016, series 2016, for $175,958.80.
A second motion.
Motion second, questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, and...
The second one is an amount of $25,324.81 for the 2017 bond.
I move to approve that series.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All same sign. You're welcome.
And the second, and the third one is for $648,445.24, which is our 2021 bond.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the $648,445.24 general obligation bond from the 2021 bank at Fulton Financial.
A second motion.
Motion second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle?
Morning.
Please introduce yourself for the record and board.
Michelle Snively, Director of Human Resources. Under resignations and terminations, Alyssa Hassler, caseworker two, children and youth resignation effective April 1st. Lindsay Kuns, full-time correctional officer at the jail, job abandonment effective March 24th. Anna Mary Geiger, full-time correctional officer at the jail, resignation effective April 3rd. Ray Arnold Jr., work release director, Lebanon County Correctional Facility Retirement, effective May 28th. Jerry Fish Jr., casual coronal logistics technician, coroner's office resignation effective February 28th. Arissa Plaza, Office Support Two Domestic Relations, termination effective March 25th. And Sheila Shockley, assistant at M H I D E I Retirement, effective May 17th.
Move to approve those terminations and resignations with special note for the retirement of Ray Arnold, personal ability with us.
And also Sheila Shockley is retiring. And she was here since 2014, so that's a wonderful term too. A second motion.
Motion second. Do you have other questions, comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Same sign. Appreciate it.
Under changes to status, transfers, and promotions, I have two motions. The first to approve, M H I D E I Administrator Holly Lee, these requests to reclassify one current full-time office support two position into grade eight on the non-union salary chart to a full-time fiscal technician position into grade 12 on the non-union salary chart, effective immediately. This position is 94.5% funded by state and federal funds and 5.5% county-funded.
Make them.
Motion? Yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That approval.
Motion to approve Treasurer Sally Newman's request to have the current employees in the treasurer's office and Belinda Spicer and tax claim work an additional 2.5 hours per week at straight pay and up to a maximum of five hours per week at overtime pay for approximately 68 weeks as needed, effective April 7th, 2025.
I move to approve Treasurer Sally Newman's request concerning her two and a half hours per week, et cetera.
I'm sorry, there was more to it, or just that part of it?
She said et cetera.
Oh, et cetera, no, I didn't hear that part. Okay, I'll second the motion.
Motion second to approve this request as submitted, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Permission is granted.
Bradley Ann Wagner, promotion from caseworker two in children and youth to child abuse investigator at the rate of $1,838.63 by weekly effective April 13th. Shannon Pedia, promotion from general clerkcy and register of wills to second deputy at the rate of $1,454.53 by weekly effective March 31st. Jamie Shoemaker, promotion from office support one in voter registration to office support two at the rate of $1,280.74 by weekly effective April 14th.
So moved.
A second motion.
Motion second, questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Moving on to other transactions, the Department of Emergency Services would like to hire the following four full-time telecommunications, all at the rate of $19.28 per hour, all effective April 7th. And that is Cassandra Giuliani, Amanda Long, Michael Steltz, and Tina Zellman. Renova Center would like to hire Skylar Patton as a full-time direct support eight at the rate of $16.54 per hour, effective April 28th.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
Is it Steltz or is it Stites? Is it?
I'm not sure.
I mean, it just, I never saw Steltz, and I wondered if it might be Stites. Just check into it.
It's with an E on the paperwork, so.
Let me get it spelled.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion? I'll send these hires.
Second.
Okay, the second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Mm-hmm.
All same sign. Those transactions are approved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Carmen Malgano, interpreter stipend, annual interpreter stipend of $1,500 prorated from the effective date of April 1st. No Aguilera Gonzalez, a longevity payment probation officer two in probation services. This is a one-time nine-year longevity payment of $2,136.87, effective April 18th. And Kevin Dugan, this is a longevity incremental increase, senior deputy district attorney, a three-year longevity increase to $3,380.97 by weekly effective April 27th.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Salary board, that is approved. Now cue. What's up?
Good morning.
Introduce yourself for the record, and you proceed.
Melissa Hart from M H I D E I.
Morning.
I am here seeking approval for contract amendments for fiscal year 2425. We have seven early intervention, six intellectual disability, and three building maintenance for a total of $118,785. That cost will, our current allocation and budget can cover that cost, so we're not looking for any additional county tax dollars.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the 16 contracts or amendments and at a total of $118,785.
A second motion.
Motion second, questions or comments? None, all in favor, please indicate, say aye.
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 All same sign. That approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Have a great rest.
Two. Moving along. Morning ladies.
Good morning.
Now, see, make yourself comfortable, and then if you want to introduce yourself for the record, and then you may proceed.
Morning, I'm Casey Felty, I work with Lebanon County M H I D E I.
Good morning, my name is Brianna Regal, and I am First Deputy at the Lebanon County Coroner Office. Um. Dr. Yocum asked me to present the 2024 final numbers, and so that's what I'm here to do. So, the first thing was cremation authorizations. There were 781 total last year, which was a decrease of two. Total coroner cases was 345, and that was an increase of five. Natural deaths, 277, an increase of 15. Accidental deaths, 37, that was a decrease of 13. Drug-related deaths, 19, which was a decrease of 14. Motor vehicle accidents, we had nine. Two deaths related to a fall. We had one death related to a silo collapse. One death related to an electrocution. One drowning, and one related to carbon monoxide poisoning. And then, under suicide deaths, we had 30 suicide deaths this past year, which was an unfortunate increase of 10. 19 of those were gunshot wounds. Seven hangings. Three of those were drug-related, and one was carbon monoxide poisoning. And then, we had one homicide this year. Well, I, in response to the increase of the suicide deaths within Lebanon County, the Suicide Prevention Task Force has increased their efforts in reaching out to individuals within the community. We have developed an one-year or an ongoing media campaign with a combination of social media, radio PSAs. We are doing a three-month bus promotion for crisis intervention in 988, excuse me, and Pandora and Spotify ads. Um. We also continue to have our Suicide Prevention Task Force meetings with our hybrid meetings that occur the fourth Tuesday of each month. We are also in the midst of planning our Mental Health Awareness Month Festival, which is occurring in May. That is Saturday, May 10th, from 10 to 1:00 p.m. We have over 50 mental health and wellness providers, activities, games, and activities for the community. We are also in the process of planning for Suicide Prevention Month, which is in September. Those events include a bingo fundraiser to allow us to do everything that we are doing, light a candle, and then also a suicide prevention walk. And then, we have our yearly remembrance ceremony that occurs in December. We don't have the specifics of that plan, but stay tuned. And if anybody is looking for more specific details, you can contact our office to inquire at 717-274-3415.
I'm sure you do need to raise in order to close the gap on the funding.
Right now, our funding, our Suicide Prevention Task Force in fundraising has done a wonderful job, and we have, I believe, over $20,000 within our budget for suicide prevention and our efforts.
But you're having a fundraiser, how much do you need to, you have a gap apparently, you need more money, how much do you need?
Um, right now, we do that, we don't have a gap right now.
Okay.
So, we just, we do this yearly, and it is a very good fundraiser, so we just need to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also was wondering, what, the age group for the deaths? Are they younger, older?
Suicide, you mean, suicide deaths, or all?
Yes, mostly the suicide.
The average age is middle age, and the average age is actually 48, 48 years old.
Okay, then, I also, as a follow-up to that, was wondering, are Pandora and Spotify, I've heard of Spotify before, but are they both social media accounts?
They are music accounts that you can listen to online.
Oh, they're music accounts, okay. And is it AM, FM?
It is actually online, they're web-based music.
And what is their target age-wise?
We can actually target who we would want to listen to it, you can...
You can pick, is John Ryan, or anything you don't...
All of that. Actually, you pick the locations, so we're focused on Lebanon County specifically between the ages, I believe, of about 25 to 50. But you can be very specific with who you target, and then Spotify and both Pandora bring back, they provide data to how many individuals actually click on the ad, how many people it has hit, how many people have actually listened to the whole ads. So, so we get that information directly from both of those providers.
Do we do any on our local radio station?
We are linking up with Farming 101 to do radio PSAs.
Okay.
And we have utilized that in the past as well.
And is, I mean, are there people clicking on it? You said you can get reports?
For Pandora and Spotify, yes. We have, we have data of individuals who are clicking, clicking on the ads.
Okay, I mean, can you share some of those numbers?
I don't have those numbers with me right now.
I just, you know, it's very specific and not local, and I wondered if it was working.
It is local, it's local, it's targeted.
It's geofenced, so they, the exact area.
Yeah, we target Lebanon County specifically with those ads.
Okay, I, I learned a lot, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um. Is that your department, did you want to make a motion, or?
I have a question. Please.
You said, okay, average suicide age is 48.8.
Correct.
Would it be fair to presume it's predominantly male, or can you give us the breakdown?
Sure, it is predominantly male. For 2024, we had, we had 26 males and 14 females.
And is the predominant method of suicide gunshot?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I saw that.
Yeah. Good question, number one, I was leaving these numbers because of, well, they didn't add them up to not equal the number of accidental deaths. It looks like it's 34, and it says here 37 accidental deaths, do we know where, what buckets the other three fall into?
You know what, I apologize, thank you for catching that. I will definitely look those numbers over, and I don't know what buckets they would fall into at the moment, but I can definitely get those numbers too. I'm sorry about that.
Part two is for the commissioners, why isn't Dr. Yocum here today?
To present, to present, and, you know, he is the coroner, paid position, and he can't come to the county commissioners' meeting? Any reason why he's not here today?
It would be a question for him, not aware, or what. I mean, so his deputy, as a representative, I mean, that's a question for him.
I mean, he used to present all the time, and in the last two years, he didn't present, and now it's back on the agenda, but he's not here. And it's hard, I mean, all due respect to you, Brianna, he's your boss, and I know he sent you, and you have to be here, but it'd be nice to actually be able to ask the actual coroner questions during a public meeting. He's a paid position, and his office is closed on Thursday, so I can't see any reason why, if today was inconvenient, why he wasn't here before this, or why he can't be here after this. I mean, is it in your opinion that's too much to ask?
I don't have an opinion on how he's busy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we have no idea where he is right now, he could be ill, he could be, you know, a funeral service family member, we don't know, but he couldn't be here, that's all we know, so he said his deputy, the report is accurate. And if you like, you can follow up with Dr. Yocum.
I think that's the best way. Yeah.
He doesn't respond to telephone calls, and it's like, oh, it's endemic within Lebanon County that elected officials do not return your calls. And, you know, I'm just saying.
Jim, if you have a question, we'd be happy to answer, but we can't answer that one at this point, so any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to state it for the record that there's more than one elected official that refuses to talk to the press in Lebanon County, and it becomes very frustrating when all you're trying to do is do your job, so.
Thank you. Ladies, anything additional for you to present?
Yeah.
We'll make a motion, we need to accept that report for the record, I'll move it.
Second.
Motion second, any questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I did, I apologize. Your mental health fair on May 10th?
Correct.
Where would that be held?
It is located at the C S G parking lot, so right at the railhead on 8th Street.
Oh, okay.
What does C S G stand?
Community Services Group.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Permission.
Great job, thank you.
Bring me back to Ross Perot. All right, Mr. Beadley, would you introduce yourself for the record, and then proceed with your presentation?
Yes, good morning, Matt Beadley, county solicitor. I'm here presenting two items. First, I'm going to stand, and I have props this morning for, this is presently before the board is in agreement of sale relative to property located right near old East Cumberland Street and East Cumberland Street. This right here is the parcel of land, and as the board is aware, there have been discussions with the entity, which is the prospective seller, the prospective buyer here, BT Lebanon County, the developers, Bruce Thaler. Mr. Thaler and his entity presently owns a 3.71 acre parcel, which is right at the corner of East Walnut Street and where East Cumberland and Old East Cumberland meet. The parcel that's currently at issue here is, it's a 17-acre plot, and it's the plot that the fire school is presently located upon. Now, the issue here, there is no issue with the fire school, the property is going to be essentially subdivided, and so what we have here is 17 acres at issue, the property price is going to be a total of $2 million. Presently before the board, however, is just an agreement of sale. This is for consideration of $25,000 paid the first year, an additional $25,000 paid if Mr. Thaler does not complete what's called due diligence after the first year. So, the term of the agreement of sale is for two years. If at the end of two years, Mr. Thaler has not completed his due diligence requirements from PennDOT, requirements from the state, et cetera, then he will come back, negotiate with the county. If he's prepared to proceed to settlement, then we will proceed with a $2 million purchase price. The, the discussions have taken place, and I've been here now for a little over a year, and this was actually one of the first things that I discussed with our county administrator, Mr. Wogamuth. The discussions from the county and center around the driver's license center right here. This is property owned by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Right here is property also owned by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This is the National Guard building here. The discussions from the county and center around Mr. Thaler obtaining more property, county-owned property around back, off of Career Drive, so that way he can discuss with the state, work with the state, to potentially develop a new driver's license center for Lebanon County. So, certain proposals have been discussed, and there are a number of different parties at play. We've had discussions with PennDOT, we've had discussions with the governor's office. A lot of that is very, very early in the process, and so that is where we are this morning. So, this is county-owned property, 17 acres, that if the board wishes to proceed, will be subject to an agreement of sale. Mr. Thaler will acquire an equitable interest in the property, and then he will then start the process, working with the state, discussions with regard to possibly a new driver's license center, and however that he would like to develop his property, if then it transfers to him at the end of the agreement sale period.
Do you have any specific recommendation? Did you, have you want to speak a little bit about?
Yeah, it would, it would be my specific recommendation to enter into this agreement of sale. This is something that Administrator Wogamuth and I have had extensive discussions with Mr. Thaler, his attorney, representatives of his, of his company. He has been very good to work with in these discussions, and I know he understands the, the need for a new driver's license center, and he sees the value that that would add to the community, so, and he's been very appreciative of the efforts of, of all of us here in Lebanon County to work with him. I do want to note, too, the property here that he presently owns, the 3.71 acre parcel, that property was entered, it was an agreement of sale that started in 2016, and we didn't close on the property until 2022. There were actually 10 amendments to extend the agreement of sale, and I know Jim and other members of the media have covered this. So, we had 10 extensions. I can't speak to how many there's going to be in this case, I just, I, hopefully that's not the case, I know we had over. Yeah, but, but I do want to stress, this is, this is the first part in a multi-multi-year, multi-step process that includes South Lebanon Township, it includes PennDOT, it includes a number of different players. The other thing, too, is because this, the property where the driver's license center is owned is Commonwealth land, any sort of a land swap that Mr. Thaler would want to possibly do, where he negotiates land to maybe move the driver's license center to the back area, and possibly to maybe adding CDL testing to that location as well, that would actually require an act of the General Assembly, so you'd have to have input from the representatives and senators. So, there are a lot of moving parts. All, all we are here for today is just entering into this agreement for the consideration price.
Yes, go ahead.
Was there a change to the proposed footprint to include part of the Quidditch Hill of wetland?
Yeah, so, right here, this is, this is all county parcel right here, and in speaking with our assessment office, they, originally, there was discussions that this, this is approximately 10 acres right here, and then this is about six, seven acres or so. This is on the other side, on the western side of Career Drive. The, the proposal now is that rather than keeping six or seven acres of, of wetland entitled to the county, that we just all be transferred to Mr. Thaler, rather than just having a little, a little parcel here and a little parcel there for the county, being that it, it is all on the same parcel. Mr. Thaler and his entity would still be required to uphold all requirements with regard to wetland.
So, but the price was also adjusted to accommodate that extra acreage?
Yeah, there were, yeah, and there were some, there were some discussions that Jamie and I had with Mr. Thaler. The, the purchase price that we agreed to in the agreement of sale, $2 million, that, we arrived at that after consultation with Dan Seaman and Ted Conley and the assessment office. They took a look at the fair market value of the property, and they provided us with some... They took a look at the fair market value of the property and they provided us with some numbers. And obviously too, the wetland is not going to be as valuable as the, the ten acres where the, the ten acres, the, the bulk of the lot, which is actually subject to, we, we lease it out, it's currently farmed. Uh, Jamie has indicated that he's had discussions with the farmer in the past and there aren't an issue, there is not an issue in that case.
You did mention the assessment office, you did get their opinion on fair market value and?
Yeah, they were actually the ones that supplied the two million dollar number, uh, to Jamie and I. And Mr. Thaler and his entity were amenable to that.
I'll move to approve the, uh, agreement as presented.
I don't want to second it.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any questions or comments?
I do have a comment. I voted to support him as long as he stayed out of the wetlands. Those wetlands may not have a great value to you, but to the citizens of this county, they do. It is the headwaters to the Quiddo Pahilla Creek and it goes into the Swetara. And, you know, it's a source of our drinking water. I don't want his pollution running unfettered into that wetland. And I think it's wrong.
Any other additional questions or comments?
I got a question. Who reported?
Yes.
I go before you.
I beg your pardon.
You make that call.
Excuse me, sir, we had time for public comment, but we'll, we'll catch your question, get to you for, for a minute. Can you hold this hall, please?
Thank you. Um, am I understanding that, uh, Mr. Thaler, that, that this whole land development would be solely for an expanded PennDOT center? Or would there be, um, other private enterprise on some of that land?
The, the agreement of sale incorporates, uh, and, and I believe it was included in the packet, but it does, it acknowledges on the part of, of the purchaser, uh, that the intention is to work with the state, work with the general assembly to have a new driver's license center. Ultimately, however, this is, uh, totally separate from the driver's license center, the property that's also owned by the state, uh, where the National Guard is. That's totally separate from the county parcel, so as far as actually binding Mr. Thaler, uh, to that express requirement, if, once it becomes his land, there, he would have, uh, that would be his, uh, objective to develop and how he sees fit. I will say though, in the, in the year that we've had discussions with him, a new driver's license center has been the main point of discussion. As far as any other retail or, or any other development, um, that's something that he'd have to address.
Because during that ten-year cycle or those ten revision cycles of that, that went on for all this, wasn't there some talk about like a sheets or something? That's possibly being on the, on some of that land?
Well, yeah, I.
So that's why I was just curious as to whether there would be more development beyond just a, a testing center potentially and, and the, and the PennDOT.
Possibly, yeah, that would be something. I can provide you with, uh, contact information for either his secretary or his attorney that we've been working with. Yeah, he would be the proper party to answer that. Like I said, I, at this point, it's so early in the process, I think the, the, the discussions up until this point were just working with the county to get this, uh, his land, this land, he wanted an equitable interest in it. He's willing to tender a total of fifty thousand dollars. So that way we don't sell it to anybody else for the next two years.
And to Commissioner Litz's point, isn't that also in the area where there's the, like, the wetland nature, you know, where the kids go for the, the study and bio things?
It was a wooden boardwalk that I actually have to build with my children. And like I said, I have no problem. I think the cause is good on the other side of the road for the driver centers for sheets. I have no problems with them. I have a problem with him impeding on that wetland. That should not be part of it.
Wasn't this also recommended by the assessment, or the assessment, uh, department?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Which your chairman, uh, I'm company, he's going to have to buy, buy, uh, all, all the requirements to, to respect those wetlands and and, uh, I, I mean, I know other for-profit golf courses that have wetlands that they have to protect them.
Oh, and there's wetlands on the other side that are also already, you know.
They're bound by law to, to keep those wetlands.
That's correct, yeah.
So, a- any other question over here?
Yeah, how's that land, I'm currently, I don't, not sure. You'd have to talk to South Lebanon Township about that.
Okay, now, sir, if I'll allow a question, uh, please, would you, uh, uh, identify yourself?
My name is Martin Barondick.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Spelled for the news media, B-A-R-O-N-D-I-C-K.
So you have a question?
And I used to be a very frequent visitor to this room years ago. Unfortunately, I stay home and take care of eternally your wife who passed away, I know that.
I'm sorry to hear that.
We were married. My question to you, attorney, uh, agreement of sale with BT Lebanon County. What does BT stand for? I don't know.
Huh? Bruce Thaler.
Thaler?
Yeah, Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. Yeah, this, Mr. Thaler is the developer, uh, who is, that is his entity, BT Lebanon County.
Is he from Lebanon County, he himself?
No.
I didn't think so.
He had, he has had projects in Lebanon County in the past. He said projects.
Joe Allen, for years you have been very concerned about that property. Due to pollution, things like that. And I can see your point, wetland, wetland. But from there, the Quiddo Pahilla runs right through Lebanon City, right? Now, if you want to talk about pollution and junk and garbage, now we can talk. Uh, how long have you lived in Lebanon County? Huh?
Three years.
Okay, uh, as far as the driver testing center. At my age, I'm not going to live to see that. I don't think you will. It's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. Wrong people in Harrisburg, a lot, a lot of things enter into it.
Excuse me, Mr. Barondick, we have other agenda items to get to, and if you want to have this conversation, we'll be around following the meeting if you'd like to continue.
I, I.
If you have any other questions?
I have done, Mr. Thaler is attorney, I'm the county solicitor, so, yeah, so that, so I'm, I'm just presenting that the discussions have taken place with the county and Mr. Thaler. Mr. Thaler, uh, being that he's not local, he's, uh, he's, uh, certainly has made it, you know, clear he's able to come in. Uh, however, I offered to present with him.
Mr. Commissioner Coon?
Yes, sir.
In other words, I get relegated if I want to find something, uh, to lock in that room. I don't have a right to attend any meetings.
No, I, it's, if you have another question, we'll entertain a question, but you seem like a.
Still looking, man. I got a lot to say.
Well.
Cause I, like I say, I've been here for, I haven't been here for a couple of years.
Sir, we bent, bent the rules to allow your question. We have time for public comment at the beginning of every meeting, so if you would like to to comment anything, you, we have that opportunity to do that. So we need to, we, we need to move on if there's any other question.
You got to be somewhere.
We have an agenda to follow, people scheduled to come in.
I got a little.
So.
Go ahead.
A motion and a second on the floor? Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, closed?
Aye.
That's approved two to one, thank you.
All right. The, uh, second item that I have, Mr. Chairman, is, this is a grant, uh, Mr. Uh, Bob Dowd, uh, requested that I present uh, on his behalf today. Uh, this is pertaining to the State Homeland Security Grant. This is a program agreement that we would have, uh, with Pima. These are federal funds and these federal funds go to funding the South Central Counterterrorism Task Force. Lebanon County is one, uh, county, along with eight other counties in the central, uh, South Central Pennsylvania region. Uh, and this is an allocation of federal funds that can be used for that, uh, task force. Uh, the money has to be, this is from, actually from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. The funds have to be obligated, uh, by, um, early to mid twenty twenty-seven. It's a hundred and twenty days prior to the expiration of the performance period, which is August thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. Some of the areas, uh, that the, that this, uh, task force works on, election security, cybersecurity, uh, regional training exercises and, uh, also emergency communications. So, uh, this is, this funding is vital to, uh, Lebanon County, uh, and our ability to receive federal funds.
I was wondering, you told me everything except the amount of the grant.
Oh, yes. It is, it's it should be in the package.
For here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, one million, uh, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Thank you.
Your speech.
Yep.
The other seven participants, are they all pretty much in Cleveland as well?
That's mine, I sent it from, uh, Bob Dowd.
Make the motion to approve the grant request for the homeland security.
Send the motion.
Motion second, table, questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, you have that approval.
That's all I have for the board this morning, thank you.
Thank you. Morning Barb.
Morning Commissioners, Barb Smith, Preparatory. I'd like to thank you for opening the doors, approving the, um, opening of the doors on March twenty-second, and I'd like to thank the press for all the publication we got. Um, we also advertised on the website and this was for our passport acceptance day. The doors opened, we, we were scheduled from eight until twelve. We opened about, well, the line started around seven forty-five or even before that. Um, we had ten employees working that day, including myself. Two of them were interpreters. I also want to thank maintenance for bringing tables and chairs and setting them in the hallway, so we were very well organized. This was the fifth time we've done this. Doors were locked at twelve o'clock. There was nobody still waiting in line, but I'll tell you, that line just went on and on. It was down the sidewalk and into the parking lot. Dawn can attest because Dawn was here. Some people waited up to two hours and that was a constant flow, so. Um, we had forty-two point five hours of overtime, but we processed one hundred and ninety-six passports and we assisted with sixteen renewals for a total of two hundred and twelve passports that morning or fifty-three per hour. So we were really pleased. There was not a moment of, of rest. We had people with, um, very jobs specifics that they were, they were doing. So we received a lot of thanks from a lot of the public. We had a lot of families that came in because children being in schools, some in elementary and middle. So it was a nice time to bring the whole family in at one time and take care of everything. And the total that we generated, now minus the forty-two, you know, of overtime, but we brought in seventy-nine hundred dollars. Uh, seventy-nine seventy. So again, thank you. We had a good time. I mean, the morning just flew by.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, can you tell me how much was left over? I mean, what did the total?
Well, I know we brought in revenue. I don't know what the pay was with, um, the overtime because.
I think it's more of a service to the public.
Yeah. I was going to say, she's thanking us and I want to thank you for coming up with the idea. I mean, you provide a service to our community and for a lot of people, it's impossible almost to get in here during normal working hours and to do this is going above and beyond what you're required to do to accommodate and make it more convenient. So I thank you for coming up with the idea. I thank, uh, Recorder Deeds for piggybacking. Thank the sheriff for accommodating and and everybody for, for making this work for the community.
It almost feels like a necessity.
Wouldn't be.
I mean, and we would like to possibly do this in the fall and the spring of each year.
My next question maybe.
Because we can, yes, we had people ask if we're doing it.
A couple of dates.
And, um, that's just seems to be, you know, we're catching them before spring break and before summertime. And then in the fall, if we do it early enough, we catch them before winter break. So they just seem to be really good times to get people with passports.
I would like to respond that I do think it's a great service. And, you know, I, I can't thank all the employees enough for coming out on a Saturday, but I just wondered about the statement. You were starting with that figure of seventy-nine hundred dollars and subtracting, but you don't know the figure. So my question really was, did seventy-nine hundred dollars cover all of the overtime?
Oh, absolutely.
But you don't know the figures.
I don't know, but
that's every, you know, it makes different.
Only a few employees really that had to come in. You, you didn't have your entire staff there, correct?
The entire Preparatory staff worked.
Oh, they did?
And plus one person from Clerks of Courts who just took pictures. That's all she did all morning. She just took pictures and, you know, we have children, so we have to have them in a car seat. We have to have a white background, so we were constantly juggling seats and, you know, adjusting the camera, so. But we, we get better each time we do it.
Thank you for accommodating people's needs in the community.
Thank you.
Morning Dan.
Morning.
Morning Dan, please introduce yourself for the record and you can proceed.
Thank you, Dan Lyons of the County Redevelopment Authority.
Yeah, title.
Detective Director.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to present a budget modification for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Program Program. Uh, this is, uh, this budget was originally approved in the fall when we submitted our application to the state. It underwent a few rounds of review. And in the final, uh, stage of review, the state took issue with one of the two Mill Creek Township activities. And because of the, how far along they are in the process, um, they encouraged us to remove that, that activity from the application, move the funding to the other Mill Creek Township activity. Uh, so that we can, they can proceed with awarding the contract. And then, um, if the township, uh, wants to do the additional work to qualify that activity that's removed, they can do that and substitute it back into the budget at later date. Um, the activities in question, the, the, uh, questioned activity is a Handicap Accessibility Improvement Project at the post office in Newmanstown. So we'd be removing that activity and moving the thirty thousand dollars to Mill Creek's owner occupied housing rehab activity. Um, I do believe the township will uh, like to do the additional engineering and design work to qualify the post office activity. So we would anticipate coming back in to make the substitution at a later date. We advertised this change in the newspaper in the public hearing yesterday. There was no public comment, um, concerning the budget modification. I would request your approval of that modification to be submitted to the state.
Make a motion to approve Dan's request.
Second the motion.
Motion second, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, have our approval, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you Dan.
Hey.
Ready for me?
What do you have?
All right, Dawn Felicio, Deputy Chief Clerk. I just have three quick things. The first thing I have is a resolution that needs approval for Lebanon Transit. This is the certifying that Lebanon Transit, that the county would, uh, do a local match of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and they need to submit this application by April twenty-eighth.
I'll move to.
Second?
Motion second, questions, comments?
All same, maybe a disclosure. Um, my wife is a
Board member.
Board member, uh, not, non-paid volunteer. I'm also.
That's a noting.
Okay.
Questions, comments, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Aye. Close same sign, you have that approval.
All right, the next thing I have is the Lebanon County Agriculture Land Preservation Board had a meeting on March twentieth and they are recommending the following three individuals to be reappointed to the, um, Preservation Board. The first one is Mervyn Horse of Newmanstown, Gary Lentz of Lebanon, and Patrick Kreiser of Newmanstown. These would be a three-year term and they would serve until January thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight.
Make a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Horse and Lentz and Kreiser to the Foreland Preservation Board.
Yes, yeah. Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? Are you getting all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, have that approval.
Okay, and the last thing I have is three disabled veteran exemptions. The first one would be for Jose Martinez of Acorn Court, Lebanon, Tony Berwagger of Lehman Street, Lebanon, and Gregory Norris of Waymouth Drive, Lebanon.
Move to approve those tax exemptions for those disabled veterans.
Second?
Motion second, questions or comments? Are you getting all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. exemptions are approved. Any other business to come before the, the board this morning, sir?
Could I be allowed to now ask, ask her some questions?
Please, if you have a question, you can, you can, aye.
The three, three appointees, are they all farmers?
Pretty much, I would imagine.
You would imagine.
I don't know about even certain.
I don't know that even certain.
They have to have a public director on the board.
What's that?
They have to have a public director on the board, but the majority are farmers.
The majority are farmers?
Good.
Well, isn't that kind of like appointing the fox to guard the hen house? Who's on that board to represent me?
Well, I go to the meetings.
You do?
Yeah.
And how much are you going to represent me, Joel?
I do my best.
My assumption is two are farmers and Patrick Kreiser, it says reappointed as a contractor board member.
He would be the public.
So he would be a public board member.
Yeah, okay.
So two and one.
They're public meetings. They are public meetings. You you write it to Ted, those, they're meetings.
But that.
They are public meetings.
Yeah, I know that, but I've been having trouble attending to any kind of a meeting. That's kind of getting a little better for me. And who, you might get lucky, I might not come here anymore because I haven't heard a damn thing anybody said, really. Because at my age, I've become hearing impaired because I had to work around entrance all my life. That said, uh, Joel and will attest to, I am the biggest opponent in Lebanon County of farmland preservation and cleaning green. I fought it, fought it, fought it. Of course, I lost, but that's why I like to know what's going on with uh, farmland preservation. I know, so I'll have to pay more close attention, but now I can get to some meetings again. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anything else? Uh, I just, I wanted a question. You know, you brought up during your presentation, you mentioned Jamie. Jamie who?
That's right. We're so.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.